Count of protests, even interviews. Hopefully I got enough battery life left for this.
Members Zaff, Councilmember Ward, Council President Pro Tim Kersey, Councilmember Kate, Councilmember Sherman, Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Gomez, Council President Cole.
Here. We will begin this afternoon with the invocation by City Clerk Mayland, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Sherman.
Please stand for our invocation. Grant those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand the mayor would like to make some comments this afternoon. Mayor Faulkner, welcome, sir.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you, Council President Cole and the entire city council for allowing me to introduce today's budget item. Over the past few years, I've worked collaboratively with past and present city council members to move forward and, in fact, unanimously approve our past budgets. We don't always agree on every detail of the decision, but we're almost always able to find common ground and work together. It's with that same spirit of cooperation that I'm here to discuss the fiscal year 2018 budget for your approval. Today, you will be casting a critical budget vote. It calls for a special election that would give San Diego voters the ultimate say on two very time-sensitive matters: a tourism measure, to modernize and expand the convention center and provide dedicated funds for street repair and homelessness; and the Soccer City Plan, to bring Major League Soccer to San Diego and redevelop the Qualcomm site at no cost to taxpayers. And since this is a very critical vote, I thought I would start by putting this in a little historical context. It's hard to believe, but I may be the only elected official in this room who was here during the financially dark days of 2009 and 2010. And during that great recession, we had to make some very hard decisions in order to close a $180 million budget deficit. We had to brown out fire engines. We slashed the operating hours of our libraries, rec centers, and public swimming pools. And city employees were forced to take reductions. I will tell you, if somebody lived through that, you should consider yourself fortunate that you didn't have to cast those budget votes. But today, the power is in your hands to keep the city on a stable financial footing. And this council has the opportunity to take the fiscally responsible and long-term view, because this budget vote will affect our city for years to come. If you follow a different path, I fear we could face even leaner budgets and much tougher decisions in the years ahead. And one of the most important things you can do is to maintain our city's fiscal health is to support my proposal to pre-fund next year's reserves. Why is this important? Because every dollar that we sock away right now is a dollar that we will not have to cut in next year's budget. For example, last year, I asked you to create a pension stabilization reserve fund to help us handle any unforeseen increases to our annual pension payment. Some of the council members were reluctant, but it was eventually funded. That means there was $16 million available to help close the budget shortfall that we're facing now. And the bottom line is this: The reason you're not talking about millions more in additional cuts today is because the council majority sitting in the same seats that you are right now made that correct decision last year. So now I'm asking you to take a similar approach. By pre-funding reserves, you're putting yourself in a much better spot when budget discussions begin next year. It's the smart thing to do, given what we know are the financial challenges that lie ahead. And so now, let's talk about what else is in the budget that you're going to hear from today. We have made so much progress to invest in all of our neighborhoods, in every single council district. And this budget plan keeps the focus on key services we have all worked very hard to restore. And even though pension costs are taking a bigger chunk out of our bottom line, this budget keeps the promise that I and many of you have made to San Diegans: the promise to put our neighborhoods first. And this balanced budget takes a fiscally responsible approach to ensure that we are keeping our libraries and rec centers open, that we continue our march together to repair 1,000 miles of streets, and provides the largest infrastructure investment of this decade with nearly $450 million for projects that benefit all of our neighborhoods. And the budget also follows sound budgeting practices by funding ongoing expenses with ongoing resources to ensure that we spend within our means. And with the May revise, we added more than $14 million to address some of the priorities that I share with the council, including more money for arts and culture, public safety, and neighborhood infrastructure projects. And this budget also includes something that I believe is critically important for our city's future. As I said, it sets aside funding for a special election later this year. Next week, I'll be asking you to officially call for a public vote in November of 2017. But a key step to get to that point is your approval of the election funding today. Without the funding for this special election, the city council will be denying voters the chance to help address three of our biggest civic challenges: expanding and modernizing the convention center, fixing our streets, and reducing homelessness. And every member of the council is rightfully on the record for calling out at least one of these as a priority for our city. We agree on that. In fact, most all of you are on the record as putting all three of these on the top of your to-do list. Now is the time for action, not delay. To ask San Diegans to wait on these priorities is irresponsible. And to deny the public the right to vote this year when it matters most, when it matters most, would be unprecedented. So please do not use a budgetary tactic as a backdoor to block a public vote. It's exactly the type of short-sighted move that critics say prevents big things from getting done in San Diego. The public deserves a full hearing in this council chambers on the tourism plan and the Soccer City initiative, because City Hall should not stand in the way, the right of the people, to vote on issues that demand immediate action. There's a lot on the line. First, San Diego is turning away thousands of jobs and tens of millions of dollars in revenue because our convention center isn't big enough. Many conventions, including Comic-Con, have been very clear that a modern, expanded convention center is a key to remaining in San Diego. And it's undeniable that an expanded convention center will bring in millions of dollars new to our general fund revenue that we can use for funding priorities, like our police officers. Second, preventing a special election would reject $10 million next year to fix our roads so that all of our neighborhoods can have smoother streets. And third, it would deprive homeless individuals the opportunity that they need to get help now, to get help now, by delaying $10 million that we immediately need to help individuals overcome homelessness, $10 million a year that we could leverage for a $140 million bond in year one. In total, that's nearly $1 billion for streets and $1 billion for helping the homeless over the next 40 years. So there's never been an initiative on the table that can do so much good for so many people on so many levels across our city. You can't say that there is a crisis and then say that you want to deal with it next year. If you say you want to help the homeless in a meaningful way, now is the time. If we say we want to grow the economy, now is the time. And if you say you want to fix San Diego's streets, now is the time. In conclusion, look at the numbers. We simply can't afford to wait. The numbers show that if we delay another year, it will cost a combined $75 million in increased construction expenses for the expansion project and lost revenue for homelessness and streets. This small investment in a special election will also result in millions more annually into the general fund for public safety, for neighborhoods, libraries, and parks, and to balance future-year budgets. There's nothing more open and democratic than putting a plan before voters so they can make the ultimate decision. So I say to you very clearly and respectfully: Give San Diegans a chance to have their voices heard this year when it matters most. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to today's deliberations. Thank you, council.
I let that go because it was the mayor. But I caution you: Please do this if you agree. We have to do that so we can keep moving along. This is going to be a long agenda, and we want to make sure that everyone is heard. So please, this is it. Thank you. Is there any council, city attorney, independent budget analyst, or city clerk comment, seeing no council members on the line? No. Okay. We will now take up the discussion agenda, Measure L, and the will of the voters. As a reminder, today's action is not about Measure L. It's about approval of the city's FY '18 budget. On Monday, June 12th, the council will also be making separate decisions on whether to call a special election for this November and whether to place the proposed TOT measure on the special election ballot. On Monday, June 19th, the council will be considering the Soccer City measure. None of these actions are before the council today. Please keep this information in mind. Before we proceed with public testimony, I understand the city attorney would also like to make some comments.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few clarifications to build on what the council president has already mentioned. If the council chooses to include funding for a special election as part of the budget approval today, that action does not automatically guarantee the calling of a special election. The council will still have to vote to approve the special election on June 12th. If the council chooses not to fund the special election as part of the budget approval today, it does not prevent the council from voting to call a special election next week. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take public testimony, and again, no, a little confusing, but again, due to the large number of speakers, comments will be limited to one minute per person. Clerk, please proceed.
Yes, and just so folks have an idea, we have 204 people who wish to speak this afternoon. In order to be as efficient as we possibly can, when your name is called, there are two seats in the front for speakers. And folks will have the one minute apiece. We'll be going back and forth, so we'll do 30 minutes worth of opposition, and then 30 minutes of in-favor speakers, back to opposition, et cetera, just to be fair to folks.
Are we ready? Okay. Don't start it yet. Hello, everybody. My name is Landon Donovan. I'd like to start by saying it's been a little bit disappointing to hear some of the things that have been said about this wonderful group of people over the past few months. Describing this as a land grab and claiming that we're trying to swindle the city is not only incorrect, it's rather disrespectful to people like Peter Seidler, Steve Altman, Mike Stone, et cetera. My hope is that we can stick to the facts and stop resorting to petty tactics so that we can make an informed decision that is truly in the best interest of all San Diegans, and I hope we all take that going forward. As some of you know, I was a professional soccer player for almost 20 years. I moved to San Diego a year and a half ago and decided to join this project, like the rest of our team, because I wanted to do something great and give back to this city. I grew up in a 900-square-foot home with a single mom, two siblings, and without soccer, life would have looked a lot different for me. I'm standing here today because I was given the opportunity to succeed through this wonderful game. It gave me hope and an outlet to express myself, a diversion from my then-undiagnosed depression, and gave me an identity in life. Unfortunately, not everybody receives that opportunity, and that's why I'm standing here today. I spent the last six months out in the community speaking to people and have fallen in love with this city and its citizens. They are caring, passionate, and, most importantly, they love this city. However, there's a real sense of discontentment with the lack of progress here in San Diego, and I can feel it. Simply put, they're losing their faith, and they want to see this city get back on its feet and become a leader again. Councilmember Ward. I was at the Water Tower yesterday, somewhere you know well, I'm sure. We hung out with a bunch of people at an impromptu gathering at the park there. We played soccer, talked soccer, talked about the project with people from all over your district, and we had a great afternoon. One thing became abundantly clear from the 500-plus people that came there throughout the two hours we were there: They are deeply concerned that their right to vote in a meaningful way is being stripped from them. Their passion for this rivals their passion and desire to see an MLS team here in San Diego. In fact, I even had one person tell me that they were actually against the project, but they wanted their right to vote in a way that mattered, count. I know today's about the budget, and we're not talking about the project, but I'm asking you, we are asking you, the people of San Diego that have voted you into office and may vote to keep you in office, are asking you to keep the money in the budget for now and give everyone two weeks to prove that this is something that San Diego wants. I know you have already seen it, felt it, heard it from all your constituents, and that will undoubtedly continue. Lastly, I played over 150 games for the U.S. national team, and I represented my country, our country, with great pride. One of the reasons I did so was because I believe in our democracy and the power of the people to decide and not just a few political insiders. I have traveled a lot, and I know all too well what it looks like in places where the people don't have their voices heard. We are better than that as San Diegans. We're better than that as Americans. Please help keep our faith in democracy with kids like this. Our people and our future are depending on it. Thank you.
Council President, members of the council, thank you so much for having us here today. We are starting with a massive civic and economic liability. Some among you are laboring under the mistaken impression that there's only one choice on the table, and that is wrong. Doing nothing is also a choice. Doing nothing has consequences, because this stadium costs $12 million a year to operate. And what I think is critically important about this budget discussion is that, respectfully, I don't believe the work has been done to understand what the alternative of doing nothing truly looks like. Two cases in point. One, as of as recently as Saturday, the university asked for their lease to be extended at that site for two additional years. That lease, as it's on the table today, offers that they pay $1.50 a ticket, or roughly $200,000 a year. So two years after SDSU's payments under the existing lease extension equals $23 million in subsidy. $23 million in subsidy, so $5 million for the special election versus $23 million in subsidy. We've just heard for the last half hour people desperately seeking additional financing for projects that are super-important, like the arts, like police, things that we massively support. The single best way to do that is ensure we're not spending $23 million over the next two years or four years solely to fund 12 games. And the university knows that this is something that is critically important for their long-term future, for their football program, which is why they're asking you and starting to put pressure on you today. Second case in point, there are lots of you, there are lots of in the opposition, some members of the council, who have asked for an RFP without a true understanding for the timeline necessary for the RFP process. The SEQA process required for this site is incredibly complicated. It requires two different SEQUAs from two different organizations: the university plus the city in and of itself. It's an RFP process, and each year that that takes is $16 million worth of costs. Our best estimate: five to 10 years. So somewhere between $80 and $160 million of expense. So let's put that in context. We're talking about somewhere spending $5 million and freeing up somewhere between $23 and $160 million before the proposals of "do nothing" have actually resulted in something starting to happen on that site. We're putting away a program that generates $1.4 billion surplus for the city, the county, and the schools for the sake of $5 million one-time expense. We're getting rid of 26,000 jobs for the sake of a $5 million one-time expense. This project creates tax revenues. It creates a river park. It creates real civic pride. And it does it in a way that's incredibly consistent with Measure L, because what Measure L called for was for people to have a meaningful vote. And what Councilmember Ward heard this morning directly from the commissioner of MLS himself: They intend to make these decisions in the early part of 2018. So let nobody leave this council chamber under the illusion that delaying this actually secures an option for soccer. The vote that's being put in front of people and the reason it's critical to happen right now is a choice between allowing people to vote between soccer and no soccer in November 2017, or disingenuously giving people a vote with an outcome that's predetermined. A vote between no soccer and no soccer is not a vote. And as you recall from Measure L, one of the key things that it says is that Measure L gives voters, and not special interests, the power to decide on really big issues. And here, we have a group that, an election in front of people, that in a small, narrow vote wins 60-40. In a wide, broad vote, wins 75-25. It's amazingly popular in both cases. The group that you actually are trying to support in the Measure L proposal is the group that takes it from 60-40 success to 75-25 success. And if you move this vote to 2018 and you rob them of that, you have inherently disenfranchised everyone, everyone who wants soccer. So who does that help? That helps the politically-connected few. That helps the special interests who don't want this project. That helps the developers who have land 300 yards from the site. Who does it not help? It doesn't help the 112,000 San Diegans who actually signed the petition in a record-breaking two weeks. It doesn't help anybody who loves soccer, like the legions behind me, and thank you all for being here today. It doesn't help professional sports fans. It doesn't help the people who care about the environment or love the river park or want to see the community made better. It doesn't help the taxpayer. Ultimately, the best way to fund the programs that we have just heard about and are critical, and our group, the group here today desperately supports, is to free up sustainable, ongoing budget by creating surplus and removing ongoing expense. And this proposal does exactly that. $5 million to save up to $160 million. It doesn't take a CPA to figure out that is a really good investment. This project creates a fully-funded river park. It creates a new professional soccer franchise. It provides a home for SDSU to relieve the city of the burden of $12 million a year of ongoing subsidies. And it does all of that without asking for a penny from taxpayers. I think at a core, fundamental level, the 112,000 San Diegans who signed that petition signed asking for their voice to be heard. Please allow this discussion to go for two weeks so you can actually hear their voice. So before you render a decision on whether or not to let them vote, you actually let them speak. Thank you.
My name is Shannon McMillan, and I grew up in San Diego, and I still call it home. I was very blessed with a 12-year career with the U.S. women's national team that saw me through two World Cups and three Olympic Games. I proudly brought a world championship and two gold medals back to San Diego. I've also had the luxury of playing professionally in San Diego with the San Diego spirit back in 2000 to 2003. And I can tell you, first and foremost, every single player, from the national team members that I played with to the kids that were just out of college, everyone that came through San Diego and played a game here left in awe and envious of what we had here. And this was just on a small scale compared to what this could be with the MLS. This was playing at USD Stadium, about 4,500. But the crowd was electric. Our fan base was so amazing that people left envious that we got to play in San Diego and call it our home base. Since retiring, I've dedicated myself to giving back to my community and the game, similar to what Landon said, that's been so great to me. Because without soccer, I wouldn't have been able to go to college. It helped pay for my education. It took me around the world, and it taught me many life lessons. So I've dedicated myself to giving back to the community and the game by sharing my passion for the game, inspiring the next generation of players, and also by promoting soccer, women's soccer specifically. That's why I've joined FS Investors and Soccer City team, because they see the value in that, and they see that this is a legacy project that's not just going to help these young men and women that are here, but their kids and their grandkids. It's going to leave a mark for many, many years to come. For the last eight years, I've run a local soccer club that's competitive and recreational, and I've seen firsthand how much pressure is on the youth of today. It's no secret that sports, and soccer specifically, can give them an amazing advantage and set them up to succeed well beyond the field and later on in life. Soccer teaches many, many life lessons, from teamwork, handling, and then overcoming adversity, to also leadership and having confidence in themselves. The growth and the progress that we need to keep investing in our kids does not happen in the near future without a youth academy, which is an integral part of Soccer City. This is beyond just having MLS. This opens the door for a professional women's league and a youth academy, an academy that will help develop leaders for the future of San Diego, an academy that can start and be up and running in January of 2018. There are quite a few national team players on both the men's and women's side who have come from San Diego besides myself: Frankie Haddock, Rachel Buehler, Steve Turandolo. With Soccer City and the investment in our youth players, San Diego continued to be well-represented on both the men's and women's team nationally and internationally. All of this is tied to the MLS franchise expansion round that happens at the end of the year, early 2018. So the timing of this election absolutely matters. I truly hope that you'll do your part, and as we mentioned, just hold the budget line for us. Give us the couple weeks so that you can still hear from the constituents. If at that point it's not approved, reallocate it. But don't kill it now. Please don't let the thousands of young boys and girls that I have the honor of working with down by pulling this budget item, because allowing this to happen and allowing this youth academy is going to help me, Landon, and other national team players and other players from the collegiate level. All of San Diegans truly have an impact on so many more kids. Please let San Diegans have the chance to vote this year. I thank you, Council President and council members, for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Altman. And Steve Altman has time seated by Michelle Wegner and Walter Birnann for a total of three minutes. He'll be followed by Ann Hartley, who'll be followed by Dave Mata. Steve Altman, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. First, let me say I'm so proud of that group that just spoke beforehand. Very, very good. So my name is Steve Altman, and I'm a partner in the Soccer City project. My message is simple. Take a moment and ask yourselves whether the council would vote to allocate funds for a special election if instead of Major League Soccer, we were working with the NFL to bring in a team to San Diego? If NFL Commissioner Roger Goodell was standing on the top of the midway with us when we announced, instead of Major League Soccer Commissioner Don Garber, would the city council vote in favor of allocating funds to a special election and let the people decide? I think the answer is an overwhelming yes. Those of you here today that would vote yes to funding a special election if this was the NFL, but would vote no on Major League Soccer, should ask yourselves why that is. I will tell you why I think that's the case. Major League Soccer is not viewed as a real sport by the old guard of this city. I didn't know much about soccer when I first got involved in this project, and frankly, still have a lot to learn about the game. But let me tell you a few things I have learned. It is the world's most popular sport. Nine of the top 10 athletes in the world, as ranked by social media, are soccer players. Four of the top 10 most valuable sports franchises in the world are soccer. In the U.S., it is estimated that 4 million people play football, while 15 million people play soccer. 300 million worldwide play soccer. Unlike football, soccer is gender-neutral. Of the 15 million that play soccer in the U.S., 45% are female. Average attendance at Major League Soccer games exceed the average attendance of NBA games. In the millennial category, soccer is the second-most viewed sport in the U.S., second only to the NFL. But most importantly, what I have learned is that there are tons of people in San Diego that are passionate soccer fans. Many thousands of them have reached out to us, urging us forward. Over 100,000 people signed a petition in support of Soccer City in record time. Some of those opposing Soccer City have learned this too, and it is why they don't want a special election this year, because if there is a vote... Because if there is a vote this year, the soccer fans of San Diego will come out in droves, and they are just as passionate about the sport of soccer as many of us are about the NFL. Perhaps my partners and I came into this a little naively, and I for one didn't fully appreciate how the opposition would demonize us. Those that know us, though, know that our motives are not to swindle anyone. Our motives are to bring something great to San Diego, a legacy that my kids and their kids can be proud of. The NFL has left our city, and it may never come back. Major League Soccer is a professional sport loved by many in our city, and I ask that you allow them to vote on this in a way that gives us the opportunity to bring this professional sports to San Diego.
Thank you, sir. Ann Hartley, followed by Dave Mata, followed by Robert Grasnick, followed by Tom Nichol. You'll each have one minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Hartley. I work in citywide convention sales for the San Diego Tourism Authority. Thank you, Council President Cole and City Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak today. In my position as a National Sales Director for the last 14 years, I have had the privilege of working with San Diego Comic-Con International. As you are aware, annually, Comic-Con provides tremendous economic impact to the entire San Diego region, generating significant transient occupancy tax. Comic-Con has outgrown the San Diego Convention Center's 525,000 square feet of contiguous exhibit space, and now utilizes hotel meeting space and other outside venues with no room for additional growth. Other cities are expanding their convention centers, and our neighbors up the road in Anaheim, for example, already have over 800,000 square feet. With their expansion, they will be twice as large as San Diego. San Francisco is also in the midst of completing an expansion of their existing space. As a result, I urge the city council to move forward with a special election this fall.
Thank you. Dave Mata, followed by Robert Grasnick, followed by Tom Nichol, followed by James Fallis.
Good afternoon, Council President Cole and Councilmembers. My name is Dave Mata, and I'm a National Sales Director at the SDTA, responsible for booking conventions at the San Diego Convention Center. I've had the opportunity to sell the convention center for 10 years, so I'm very familiar with our convention customers, their organizations, and our business environment. Every year, we're forced to turn away valuable convention business due to lack of available meeting space at the center. Additionally, some of our largest and most valuable conventions are outgrowing existing building, and will be forced to leave the center and take their TOT dollars elsewhere. As an example, I work with the American Association for Cancer Research, who brings 18,000 attendees to their annual convention. When they were here in San Diego in 2014, they produced roughly $700,000 in TOT revenue for the city. They would like to return every three years to San Diego. However, without expansion, they will outgrow us after 2020. The city will lose the convention. I urge you to vote yes on the special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Grasnick, followed by Tom Nichol, followed by James Fallis, followed by Bob Turner. And please come forward when your name is called. There are seats in the front for speakers that'll facilitate the speaking. Robert Grasnick, followed by Tom Nichol, followed by James Fallis. Is Robert Grasnick present? If not, then Tom Nichol, please come forward. You'll be followed by James Fallis, followed by Bob Turner.
Hi, my name is Tom Nichol. Thank you to the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I own O'Brien's Pub in Kearney Mesa, which is the headquarters for our local soccer supporters group here, the American Outlaws, in Councilmember Kate's district. I also own a brewery in town, so I have two businesses that are highly impacted, both by the decision on Soccer City and on the decision on the convention center. The convention center expansion is something that's going to lose money. As Nick pointed out earlier, people here are coming to you asking for money, and this election, although it's a $5 million expense now, is potentially going to save money, maybe on the stadium, but certainly in keeping conventions coming here, people spending those monies in the hospitality industries, at places like mine, at breweries around town, staying in hotels. I think both of these issues are going to benefit the city greatly in the long term, and they need to be further discussed and held over for at least two more weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Fallis, F-A-L-E-S. James Fallis, followed by Bob Turner.
Good afternoon. So last summer, I had, actually from March to November, I had the pleasure of interning at Barbara Bree's campaign, Councilmember Bree's campaign now. We ran on the idea of an innovation economy and a grassroots campaign. We had hundreds of high school and college volunteers. And now I wonder, what was the value of that, and was it really a grassroots campaign? Because as it seems now, it may seem like you are valuing the donations of certain individuals over Keaton Smith, over Nico Molina, over Helena Kim, and all the others that donated their time for free to your campaign. And maybe it's a sort of naivety common in high schools and college students alike, but you said it yourself, you never wanted to be a politician. But as it seems now, it seems as though you do. And I'm quite confused, and I see a big difference from the candidate that I saw. Why turn down the general interest, millions of taxpayer dollars, and businesses for a few individuals with money?
Thank you. Bob Turner, followed by Carlene Driggs, followed by Efren Valeila Mayo.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Bob Turner. I'm here as a concerned parent, citizen, and president of the Presidio Soccer League. For those of you who don't know, Presidio Soccer League is a gaming league in San Diego with over 20,000 players. I'd like to say I'm surprised by the way this Soccer City project has proceeded, but I was born and raised here, so I know this is the way most things and most projects go in our city. They just, everything goes into a stalemate. We're used to special interests and personal agenda groups blocking any project that doesn't serve them. But what I'm very disturbed about is a board member who's spewing misinformation on television and radio. Mr. Ward, if I was in your district, I would be concerned and have a hard time believing anything that you say. I would look into your potential ties to special interests. I'm imploring you, the board, to do the right thing and vote to keep the money in the budget today and the project on the ballot for 2017, not 18. This will save the Soccer City project and millions of dollars for the convention center. Quit making America's finest city a laughingstock around the country. By the way, Mr. Board, Grossmont College is way too small and probably would harm the reputation of San Diego State.
Thank you. Carlene Driggs, followed by Efren Valeila Mayo, followed by Emmanuel Holguen. Is Carlene Driggs, you'll have a minute.
First of all, thank you for this opportunity to be here. It's really a great pleasure and an honor for me to be here today. I grew up playing soccer from the time I was five years old. I've been a resident now of San Diego close to 17 years, and soccer inspired my life, so much so, I started my own business here in San Diego, serving over 3,000 kids. And I see the positive impact soccer had in my life and how it benefits other kids in the community. I have kids come to our after-school soccer classes saying, "I had a terrible day at school." But I came to school today because I knew I had soccer class afterwards. And I just see how it motivates and inspires them, not only just on the soccer field, but in their personal life. So I would really encourage you to support this decision and give us a voice and give us the opportunity to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Efren Valeila Mayo. Is Efren present? He'll be followed by Emmanuel Holguen, followed by Brent McDonald. If Efren's not present, Emmanuel Holguen. Emmanuel Holguen, followed by Brent McDonald. Is Brent McDonald present? How about Brandon O'Shea? Helena Kim? If I've called your name at all, please come forward. Joshua Garcia? Sir, if you'll state your name, you can have your minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Brandon O'Shea, San Diego native. Since Measure L has been a talking point with this discussion, I wanted to specifically address it. I was a supporter of Measure L specifically because it protected our rights and your rights to call for a special election in this exact scenario. It's our civic identity that is in desperate peril today, and that's why we need to approve funding to finally allow voters to take action in San Diego. Council President Cole, last year, when Measure C failed, I respected the initiative that you showed when you came up with a solution at the Qualcomm site to propose a $1 a year lease for the Chargers. It showed your commitment to take action. I hope that you uphold that precedent that you set then. Soccer City is not asking for a $1 a year lease. My hope is the incredibly diverse group of San Diegans sitting behind me today will be able to cast a vote now, when it matters. Kicking the can down the road when the, without a viable alternative, has been the MO for the city for far too long. I used to work for Major League Soccer, and as I understand, our window to secure MLS is now. To suggest that we can simply pluck a club out of an existing market is disingenuous at best. As Councilmember Gomez said...
Sir, I'm sorry, you're out of time. But thank you.
Did Efren Valeila Mayo come forward? If not, Emmanuel Holguen or Brent McDonald? Helena Kim? Joshua Garcia? Please come forward, Mr. Garcia. Followed by Judith Olson, followed by Jonathan Rico Aviles.
Hello, my name is Joshua Garcia. I've lived in San Diego my whole life. Right now, I'm currently living in District 7, Mission Valley, right next to where the project is going to be proposed, to be built. I've played soccer my whole life, and to me, it's a beautiful game, and it's given me hope. I've been to places where soccer is really popular. To me, I feel like it would bring a lot of spirit to San Diego, going to different cities, seeing like, big figures on walls, showing that people have a voice. And San Diego is very important to me, too. I hope that you guys take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Helena Kim? If not, Judith Olson, please come forward. You'll be followed by Jonathan Rico Aviles, followed by Darlie Hittike.
My name is Judith Olson, and I'm a resident of District 1. I'm asking that the city council hold money in the budget for the special election in November 2017, so that I and many other San Diego citizens can vote in favor of the Soccer City initiative. I know that there are a lot of other many worthy budget considerations, but this is a unique opportunity for the city of San Diego. And not only is the benefit in terms of soccer, but the project itself has multiple benefits. I believe that San Diego and its citizens will benefit, and also, of course, get revenue, which I'm sure is of importance, and that this revenue will exceed the expenditure for the special election. In conclusion, I'd like to ask for the opportunity to vote in a special election, so that I can vote for the Soccer City initiative and others like me can do so. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Jonathan Rico Aviles, followed by Darlie Hittike, followed by Pearl Adams.
Good afternoon, guys. San Diego is such a great city, that's why so many people relocate to San Diego. I take great pride in being one of the few born and raised San Diegans. And as a born and raised San Diegan, I'm asking you, please keep money in your budget to give me a voice. Please allow me to go to a voting booth and voice my opinion. This is something that will impact San Diego for generations to come. Please do not silence the citizens of San Diego. Please do not silence me. Please allow me to have my vote, when it matters the most, which is November 2017.
Thank you. Darlie Hittike? Is Darlie Hittike here? If not, Pearl Adams? If not, William King? Jennifer M. Sam? Come forward, sir, if you're a speaker, just state your name. You'll have your minute.
Will King, District 3. As everyone knows, we cannot predict the future. And in Measure L, we reserve your right to hold the special election for a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I would like to have an MLS team and have one of the best American soccer players in the history lead a youth program. Thank you.
Ellie Gibbs, Wilbur Lay, and Vania Rosas Erp, for a total of four minutes.
I promise I won't take all of it. Good afternoon, Councilwoman President Cole and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us. Thank you for sitting in your seats for such a long time, through all these public testimonies. I know your butt's got to hurt. But I come to you as a fourth-generation hotelier. Me, my staff, and my cousin Wilbur were fourth-generation hoteliers, small hotels, and we're independent. So we believe as a family that not only is our family important, but our employees and our community. That is why I started Pacific Beach Clean and Safe, with the spearheading help of Councilmember Lori Zaff, helping us get that funded. Three years of work, we finally got it funded this year. And I'll tell you, the work that needs to be done needs to continue. So the special election, the $5 million, puts bondable funds into the budget, funds that we can bond against. So since three years ago, I've been trying to find bondable funds, whether it be parking meters, maintenance assessment districts, sales task assessment, whatever it could be. It's been three years, and we haven't been able to do anything. It took us three years to come up with $110,000. We're running on a shoestring budget, but you know what? We're making a difference. We've hired six people, and part of our program is to hire homeless individuals off the street to work for the business improvement districts. We've hired six individuals off the street. We're going to hire more, and we're going to continue the fundraising, so if anybody else has any more funds in their budget, please come to PV Clean and Safe to donate there. But, aside the facts, but we're making a difference there. But what would make a bigger difference is the $10 to $15 million a year that the TOT would give off, to bond that against housing. So the problem, the word homelessness, you can solve homelessness by just fixing the word, providing homes. I think we can all agree that provide homes for the homeless, we can give them a place to stay, a place called base, and a place to move forward from. You know, the homeless have been getting the bad rap. They're not lazy, and they're not ill-intended, they're not all aggressive. Most of them want a job, most of them want an opportunity, and I would say all of them want a home. So we can do that, as together, we expand the convention center, which does another thing, too. It creates another $25 to $42 million into the general fund. We set aside, we canceled 450 events at the convention center. We were not able to take it because of size restrictions, which was a $20 to $45 million TOT impact to the general fund. That, let's weigh that out. Let's just use the higher number, because I like the higher number, $45 million to five. That's a 9 to 1 ratio. It makes no sense, the ROI doesn't make any sense, for us to not use the $5 million for a special election, to let, everybody said, to let the people speak and vote, and to expand the convention center. We need that expansion. My small business needs that expansion if I want to stay independent, but we won't go there. What we really need is to expand the convention center, more funds in TOT, more funds in public safety, more funds in lifeguards, more funds for homeless outreach, especially bondable funds that can make a difference in my community District 2. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Spencer Mosher, followed by Hector Tryu.
Thank you, members of the city council, for taking my comments. First off, I want to, in regards to the Soccer City project, you have an amazing opportunity here to revitalize Mission Valley, to bring an MLS team to San Diego, and please don't ruin this great opportunity. It's going to bring millions of tourism dollars in, and it's going to be great for San Diego. Second, I also want to address the claim made earlier about the San Diego lease in regards to the Fifth Avenue landing. The opposition failed to mention in the provision, it pays the way for both the expansion and the proposed Bayfront Hotel, specifically Pages 78 through 82. We're going to lose Comic-Con to Anaheim, to other cities, if we don't expand, and we really need this expansion. It's passed the Coastal Commission, it's ready to go, let's get everything done. And I urge everyone here to vote yes, to give the voters the opportunity to decide on this special election. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hector Trujillo, followed by Gretchen Newsom. Is Hector here? If not, Gretchen Newsom. Mike McDowell and Terry Brown. Ted Multer. Carrie Kappick. Mike McDowell. Do you want to come forward and state your name? Is Terry Brown ceding you time, or are you two speaking together? I apologize. Sir, go ahead and give your name.
I'm Ted Multer, I just had the minute.
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Cole and councilmembers, for listening to all of the discussion today. I'm the current Chair of the San Diego Tourism Authority, and it's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve our tourism community and the city of San Diego in this fashion. I'm also an employee at the San Diego Zoo and a resident of Talmage. I've lived in San Diego for 20 years, and I've seen the fits and starts of the progress around these things. And I do think the time that we're taking right now is extremely important, and we don't have a lot of it. Our competitors are circling, they have resources, they're crowding in on our opportunities. This is an important opportunity for San Diego to do this. I do urge you to put the resources behind the special election, give the voters the chance they're asking for, and give the 184,000 of us that are employed in the San Diego tourism economy the chance to do our job, to bring more resources to San Diego with these assistance. Those of you that are in the industry, please stand up and join me, represent us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McDowell and Terry Brown. Is Terry Brown ceding you time, Mr. McDowell, for two minutes? Is Terry Brown ceding you time? Yes. Okay, so two minutes.
Well, I've been to a lot of these meetings, but today was amazing to hear...
Well, I've been to a lot of these meetings, but today was amazing to hear some of the young people here today. The adage still stands that from the mouth of babes comes significant wisdom, so excited to see you engaged and stay engaged, please. Mike McDowell, President and CEO of the San Diego Lodging Industry Association. We have a solution before us to help solve our homeless problem, fix our streets, and modernize and expand our convention center, which, as you know, is an economic engine that fuels our region's tourism economy. Overnight lodging visitors poured more than 200 million into the general fund of the city of San Diego in 2016. I don't think Balboa Park generated quite 200 million. I'm sure they had a good return on investment, but I don't think it was 200 million. Revenues from the TOT are the third-largest source of revenue to the city's general fund, and we plan to grow those revenues by expanding the convention center. It's really that simple. The good news is, we can significantly increase this revenue stream if we modernize and expand the convention center, and the lodging industry is willing to tax ourselves to get that done. We may not always be so cooperative, to tax ourselves. The best part, San Diegans would not pay the proposed increase to our transient occupancy tax, the visitors would. The convention center is turning away hundreds of conventions every year. Those conventions would generate hundreds of thousands of hotel room nights and tens of millions in new general fund revenues, which pay for police, fire, and other city services in every San Diego neighborhood. Tourism is San Diego's golden goose. The convention center is an engine driving our tourism economy, fattening that golden goose. Meetings are gold. Just 6% of our 32 million annual visitors are here for meetings and conventions, yet they generate 27% of all TOT revenue. We need more eggs from the golden goose. I urge you to leave the $5 million in the budget, so we can let the voters choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Capic will be followed by Fernando Romeo and Oscar Pedras, and Ms. Capic has time seated by Tony Manolatos and Bob Nelson, for a total of three minutes.
Thank you so much. I will not take that time. Carrie Capic, COO at the San Diego Tourism Authority, thank you so much for listening to us today. I'm really here to encourage you to leave the money in the budget. It is so important that we address the problems that are facing us and that we allow the voters to choose what should happen next for San Diego. We're talking about very important things that impact our economy and our community. The convention center is an important economic driver. It's generating about 30 million a year in TOT. By expanding the convention center, by being able to have more groups here, by being able to have larger groups here, and by retaining our customers, you are able to solve very big problems for the city of San Diego, namely that's more revenue that goes into the general fund, money that's available to help start to address the homeless crisis, and money that can help fix our streets and our infrastructure. We are at a point where we need to act now. We've been talking about expansion of the convention center for almost a decade. It's been four years since the Coastal Commission approved the expansion of the convention center. Our customers don't believe us when we talk about that we will eventually get there. We need to make this happen, and we really appreciate your consideration. Please leave the money in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are Fernando Romeo or Oscar Pedras present? If so, they've asked for an interpreter if they would step to the side. My staff will assist them momentarily. Other than that, Carrie Taylor's our next speaker, followed by Jessica Pereira. Is Carrie Taylor present? Thank you. And Ms. Taylor has time seated by Juan Alvarez for two minutes. You'll be followed by Jessica Pereira, followed by David Terzabakian.
Thank you. Councilmembers, my name is Carrie Taylor, and I've been a lifelong educator and advocate for girls and women. I'm in full support of Soccer City SD and FS Investors' proposal, and I respectfully ask that you keep the $5 million in the budget for the special election. Nick Stone has spoken to the $5 million being an investment for the long term and bringing a lot of money into the city on the back end. This project is sound and good for not only the soccer community, but all of San Diego. The benefits are numerous: jobs, parks, a new stadium, and a boost to the overall economy. Council President Cole, you know a lot about FIRST as being the first African-American woman being elected to the City Council in a special election. You have a tremendous opportunity to let this project of FIRST be a legacy to the city of San Diego by building towards a positive future for all residents. I respectfully ask that the council let us vote in November 2017, so we can show the rest of the country that San Diego is truly America's finest city and that the City Council is forward-thinking and visionary leaders who care about letting the voice of the people be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Pereira. And Jessica Pereira has time seated by Saker Suraneko, Brian Robinson, and Jeffrey Robinson, for a total of four minutes. You'll be followed by David Terzabakian.
Thank you, President Cole, councilmembers. My name is Jessica Pereira, and I am the coordinator for Super Soccer Stars. Super Soccer Stars is a child development program for kids ages 2 and up, where we strive to achieve critical development markers, and of course, we teach them soccer. Our other programs include an advanced development program for competitive play, our SHINE program that makes soccer accessible to children with disabilities, and believe it or not, we even have kids as young as one in our Parent &amp; Me programs. Our mission is to introduce children to the game of soccer to all and build a love for the development process. We are a family-oriented program that is committed to community partnerships and growth from crib to college, and we believe that Soccer City is a great fit for that. So with that, I ask that you approve the $5 million in the budget. My soccer story may be similar to some of you. I started playing at age 5 on my town recreation league, where my fondest memories were of the orange slices we would get during halftime. I continued playing until middle school, when unfortunately, my terrible footwork finally caught up with me, and I didn't make the team. I ventured on to play a variety of other sports and served as president and captain of the club field hockey team in college, but those years playing soccer are some of my most memorable and informative years. One thing that has always stayed with me is my passion for the game. I remember excitedly watching the New England Revolution as a kid, and it has been inspiring to watch as the game has grown with more and more kids and adults taking interest. According to U.S. Youth Soccer, there were over 3 million kids in America playing soccer during the 2013-2014 year. The California South Region came in third, with California North only slightly beating it, and then Massachusetts coming in first. Being originally from Massachusetts, I'll take some pride in that statistic. Actually, I think Massachusetts, or Boston specifically, has a reputation for rallying behind its community, and that, dare I say it, that driving force behind that has been in support of its professional collegiate and youth sports. Sports bring people together, and while I've tried my fair share of different ones, I can honestly say that the soccer community is the most inclusive and widest spread that I've come across. It is a global community that we would be inviting into San Diego. Soccer celebrates different backgrounds, cultures, gender, all through one common language, the beautiful game. As my manager from England would say, "You only need a soccer ball and sweaters as goalposts to play, and that makes it accessible for anyone." It's this ability to link and connect different people through a fun and interactive game that makes the development of Soccer City such an exciting opportunity, not to mention the positive benefits of having athletics and role models easily accessible to our youth. Super Soccer Stars strives to develop self-confidence in our players and develop teamwork skills. Almost every time I run a scrimmage in one of our classes, I give our young players the opportunity to name their team. We have the usual Ronaldo stars or Barcelona teams, but how great would it be if our youth were aspiring to be named after a San Diego team or a San Diego player? Soccer City has the potential to be a great outlet for our families. As I said, we come from a community-based mission that focuses on the whole child and most times the whole family. San Diego deserves to see how this could be a positive benefit to our community and how this potential project could not just be a part of a larger community, but help connect and shape it. We hope that you'll vote to see this through, so the city of San Diego has the opportunity to grow and has the opportunity to experience firsthand the amazing soccer community at large. We are excited to support the development of Soccer City and introduce a new generation to the game of soccer. Thank you.
Thank you. David Terzabakian, and then Fernando Romeo and Oscar Pedras, please do come forward. We have an interpreter to assist you. Mr. Terzabakian has time seated by Eduardo Sanchez, for a total of two minutes.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak today. My name is David Terzabashian. I was born and raised in San Diego, went to San Diego State, played soccer there. After graduating, went around the world trying to make different professional teams, and after having some moderate success, came back to start a private soccer training academy here in San Diego, after seeing a serious need for it. Also, I just wanted to mention, I want to make sure that our supposed spokesman Fred Pierce is not speaking on behalf of all of SDSU alumni, and I'm afraid he is hopefully, hopelessly, thank you, he's conflicted having done over $1 billion in revenue for his own profit. And I know, after speaking to many of the faculty, staff, students that are still there, as well as alumni, that there is a huge need to at least understand more about the Soccer City project, as there is so much it can offer for San Diego, and as well as the youth in San Diego. I help bridge the gap between the families and players that want to play soccer, watching it on TV, and actually making that a reality and helping them play here in San Diego and connecting them to different soccer clubs and different soccer communities. If we had an MLS team that kids could look up to here and have something to really strive for, keep them out of the streets, and really focused on something that really could enhance their lives, and they wouldn't need, after they graduate college, to go around the world like I did to try to find opportunity, they would have an opportunity here in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Enge, E-N-G-E. Brian?
Yes.
You have time seated by Cynthia Joyner for two minutes. You'll be followed by Di Anywo, followed by Derek Engi.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Engi, and I am a board member at San Diego Sport Innovators. We are a business promoter for the sports and active lifestyle community that was spawned out of the very successful Connect organization. The sports and active lifestyle industry represents $1.3 billion of economic impact to San Diego, as well as 37,000 jobs. Our organization has actually helped create 61 new companies in the last five years that have raised over $50 million. We are a sports hub around the world. There are three major sports hubs in the United States. San Diego is one, Portland, Oregon is the other, and Boston, Massachusetts is a third. The other two, Boston and Portland, open their arms to the sports community and have multiple professional sports. I can tell you that I, and the members of our group, and certainly the companies that make up the sports and active lifestyle community inside of San Diego and San Diego County, are very concerned by the perception of San Diego and are very concerned by our ability to continue to be a hub for sports, when our city cannot retain professional sports teams and looks to actively be rejecting those. So I, like many others, but for different reasons, also ask that you keep the $5 million in the budget to allow us to vote, so we can really consider the economic impact and the brand benefit of having sports be a major hub for San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Di Anywo, A-N-Y-I-W-O. You'll be followed by Derek Engi, followed by Sean Duffy.
Hello, my name is DK Anywo. That name comes from Nigeria, which is where my family comes from. You know, after my parents moved here, I was obviously raised in the United States and became a member of the soccer community, and that's where I'm coming to you from today. You know, being a resident of Point Loma here in District 2, I've realized that not only is there a dramatic and very dynamic community here of people from various different backgrounds, but also that soccer is so often the common denominator between people who have so much and so little, between people who have such wildly varying backgrounds and expertise. And I'm here today to ask City Council, my own representative, Ms. Zaff, to remove, excuse me, to leave the money in the budget for our special election this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Engi. You'll be followed by Sean Duffy, followed by Andy Altman. Then we'll turn back to opposition speakers.
Hello, my name is Derek Engi, and I play for San Diego Surf Developmental Academy. I want to talk to you about two things today. The first is the academy. I want you to understand how important the Developmental Academy is to the kids. Kids in the academy are largely able to get their college fully or partially paid for, and many others are able to use soccer to get themselves into universities they may not have been able to get into otherwise. Secondly, it's completely free, so it would not just be for the richest people. Instead, the academy would provide equal opportunity to all and truly be for those that are most deserving to be there. The second thing I want to talk to you about is democracy. I'm about to graduate high school, and I will be attending Tufts University next year. In school, I've learned that we live in a democracy and that those in office are supposed to represent the wishes of the people. However, in the first election I was ever able to vote in, the man who lost the popular vote won the presidency, and now I see a situation in which the system could fail us again, if the people are not allowed to vote on this proposal. I initially was interested in studying government and political science at Tufts next year.
Thank you so much. Your time is up, though, but thank you.
Thank you. Sean Duffy, followed by Andy Altman, and then we'll be turning back to speakers in opposition. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Andy Altman. Sean's not here, so I'll go ahead. I handle social media for Soccer City SD. My dad, Steve Altman, is also one of the partners. So as a social media guy, I first want to apologize for some of our missing supporters. I was sort of promoting this, you know, get here at like noon, and a lot of people did, and they had to get back to life, I guess. But in any case, I'll continue. I'm a San Diego native. I've lived in four of the nine districts throughout my life, currently residing in District 1. In my experience, social media allows for a group of people to make their voice heard. It's one of the many outlets. And no matter the outcome today, we'll either be trying to change the council's mind come the 19th or earlier, or we'll be proving that you made the right decision. So I'm gonna do something in this coming week that I kind of want to put on your radar. I'm going to ask the supporters of Soccer City on social media, we have about 40,000 followers on Facebook that kind of just sprung up, to send me a video. And I'm gonna compile those videos and do my best to share their message with you, the council, as early as we're able to. And my hope is that, you know, you're able to see how important it is to the people of San Diego that our voices are heard on November 7, 2017. I apologize also for how many social media mentions that you'll be getting over the course of the week, but turn your notifications on, it'll be fun. We have something really special in front of us, but in all seriousness, you know, we haven't even mentioned the park, you know, the $40 million going towards the park, and it's just one of the many differentiators that is in this project that deserves the time of day. It really does. So, you know, all with zero taxpayer dollars and an opportunity to embrace a new soccer team that I believe personally, I'm a football guy, played football in college, but I'm ready for soccer, and I'm ready to welcome this team with open arms and fill the hole in my heart that the Chargers took. And I think a lot of us feel that way. Lastly, I want to thank everybody for the support online and also for being here today. We've stayed really positive. I don't know how many of you are following along actively, but that's kind of the world I live in. So, you know, just kind of pointing out, we've stayed really positive. We've avoided name-calling, and it's clear that when we do have an MLS team, we're gonna have the best fan group in the league, not just because of our demographics, but because of the effort and the time that people are putting into this. I'm really proud of our efforts, and by the way, on that last point, it's very clear to me that the 20% turnout notion is gonna be high. You're gonna be impressed by that and moving forward by the turnout for games. So, you know, with all that said, just want to say, I'm proud of our efforts. I really am. We've been transparent, and I think we're doing the right thing here. I hope that showing our representatives how much people really care will factor into the decision that you make today and on the 19th. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Thanks for taking the time to hear me out. My name is Anthony Medina. I'm a native of San Diego, and I've played professional indoor soccer for the San Diego Soccers for the past 10 years. I know firsthand how professional sports, specifically soccer, has the ability to transcend our great community. It's apparent, all the benefits that cannot be denied, that this project would offer our community. I ask you to ensure that this opportunity in San Diego becomes a reality by approving the election coming up this fall. This project is not only for young, but old and future generations to come. We owe it to our city to do something great, and we can't miss out on this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Eustace, followed by Sarah Matson, followed by Kendra Madsen, and Mr. Eustace has a minute seated by Namara Mercer, for a total of two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, President Cole. Councilmembers, thank you for the time that you have taken to hear the speeches today. I am the president of the San Diego County Hotel Motel Association. I am also the general manager of I am also the general manager of a 600-room hotel in downtown San Diego. Our association is asking you and supporting unanimously to keep the funds in your budget for the special election. Speaking of a group of entrepreneurs who are asking you to tax our businesses so that we can help the city, so that we can help those areas of the city that are in crisis, representing great owners like Alvin Lay, this group of individuals wants to help the city. We want to provide that sustainable and continuing revenue that you need to help this city and help this city in some very important ways. This funding is huge, funding is hugely needed, and we want to make sure that we support the city going forward. Just in closing, John Maxwell said something once that means a lot to me. The longer you wait to do something you should do now, the greater the odds that you will never get it done. Thank you very much.
Photograph y'all, and someone made me sign a piece of paper. So I'm a little confused.
What is your name?
My name is Ally Gilmore.
Okay.
I live in South O, and I grew up in Seattle, and California is my second home, and I love it. And I'm a little confused, so I'm just going to take this chance to ask you. Today isn't about us voting on whether or not we get a soccer stadium, right? Okay, thank you. And it's not about if we get a soccer stadium, these homeless people aren't going to get homes, right? So today is really just about whether or not you're going to have a special election, whether or not you're going to have the funding for it. And then maybe if you have the funding, then we'll have the election. How do you do your jobs? Good God! And then listen to all of us at the same time. All right, so I see I have a little buzzer going. Here's my thing: Seattle did soccer. They did it really well. San Diego will do it really well, and we should also get homes.
Thank you. Stephen Clare. Is Stephen Clare come forward, sir, followed by Amy Ganyo, followed by Kelly Knight, followed by Deacon Jim Vargas?
You might be wondering if I have anything left to say that hasn't already been said, and I did. It was about my experience seeing MLS boost the city of Seattle, and boom, she just took But I was also there in Portland, and I was also there in Vancouver, and I saw what the new stadium development did in Houston with the baseball. What you have here is an opportunity not just to help these people here who deserve our help one time, but to start an economic cash flow that will go and keep going, keep going. Those opposed to the plan have said, "Don't want any, we want more time for discussion." Yet they're asking you to kill it here today, because you know and I know that MLS is not going to be back next year. They're going to fill up the other slots very, very soon. So we have an opportunity here today, at least let the people be heard. The argument against this plan can be decided by the punters, and I've heard something strange today: An argument against democracy is having a vote. This could be the day where you kill the whole thing. As they say in my country, "Don't do a Brexit and kill off the hopes of the young."
Thank you. Amy Ganyo, followed by Kelly Knight, followed by Deacon Jim Vargas, followed by Sophie Barnhorst.
I want his accent. He sounds really cool. And listening to all the soccer stuff, I was a soccer player as well. It's really cool to see all that. That's just Amy talking, not Alpha Project. I am here to, we are in support of the mayor's budget and for the special election. As we all know, that there is a major, major, major concern with homelessness in San Diego. I know there's been a lot of soccer talk, but not a lot of homelessness talk, but that's what I'm here to do. This would give us a dedicated revenue stream as the TOT tax went on the ballot and got passed, and that's something that we desperately need here. As a lot of you may or may not know, we're ranked number four in the country for homelessness, and we rank 22nd for the federal government's allotment of those funds. We cannot rely on the federal government. We cannot rely on the state government. I'm a little nervous about the administration at this point coming in on what's going to happen. We've heard a lot of things that are really scary about things that sustain projects and keep our business going. It almost seems as though we have the opportunity to hear more homeless people. So we are in support, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Kelly Knight, followed by Deacon Jim Vargas, followed by Sophie Barnhorst.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak to you. My name is Kelly Knight. I come to you as a native San Diegan, a mother, and a formerly homeless person. My daughter and I experienced homelessness due to domestic violence, and through city-funded programs, I was able to get back on my feet. I work for Alpha Project for the homeless now, so I work with homeless every single day, and I see them struggle and suffer, and I'm for anything that'll bring a dedicated funding stream to San Diego to help us beat this problem. We can't depend on the money from the federal government anymore. We need to have our own money here in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Deacon Jim Vargas. Is Deacon Jim Vargas present? Sophie Barnhorst. Come forward, Ms. Barnhorst. You'll be followed by Diego Viasuso, followed by Daniel Reeves, followed by Michael Trimble.
Good evening, council president and members of the city council. My name is Sophie Barnhorst, and I'm here on behalf of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. The chamber has long supported a contiguous convention center expansion. In fact, our chief operating officer and executive vice president, Amy Fawcett, stood in support alongside numerous community partners at a press conference this morning. We are here today to encourage the city council to help us solve the problems before us and not to threaten the ability for large conventions to stay in San Diego. Many conventions, including Comic-Con, have been very clear that a modern, expanded convention center is key to remaining in San Diego. These large conventions are important to our tourism economy, as tourism is the third largest source of revenue. The chamber supports the convention center expansion initiative, and we urge you to do what's right for San Diego. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Diego Viasuso. Daniel Reeves. Mr. Reeves will be followed by Michael Trimble, followed by Shirley A. Mercy, followed by Stephanie Skinner.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, Council President Cole, councilmembers. Daniel Reeves, Downtown San Diego Partnership. I'm here today to respectfully urge you to move this budget forward with money allocated for an election in November of this year, for especially to consider the TOT measure that the mayor's proposing. You know, there's broad consensus that a convention center expansion is necessary for our region, and so it's not really a question of if, it seems to me, but rather a question of when. When you talk to our small and medium-sized businesses in downtown who live and die by convention business, or to our homeless neighbors who we don't currently have funding to support in their effort to get off the street, it's not a question of when. This is a question of why not? So I really hope that in your vote today, you consider those who are, I'm out of time.
Yes.
I really hope that you consider those who are in need of the funding put forward by this TOT measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Trimble. Shirley A. Mercy or Mary? Stephanie Skinner? Joyce Lane? Linda Marie Bradley? Jay Hill? Are you Linda Marie? Come on forward. Ms. Bradley will be followed by Jay Hill, followed by Kristy Hill. There's a microphone. George, can you help?
Hi. I am a resident of San Diego for more than 58 years. I grew up in Claremont, and I planned for my retirement. I took care of my mother for over 30 years. She developed Alzheimer's, and my brother took the money out of the account I was supposed to inherit. It was my 401K money. So I do not have a drug or alcohol problem, but became homeless because my brother ripped me off. But I'm here today to say that I'm in favor of any funding that the homeless can get, because I was homeless for almost two years while I fought for my SSI. And if it wasn't for Alpha Project opening up the building of Alpha Square, then I would still be homeless, because the affordable housing here is just too booked up. It takes you two years to get into something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gerto F. Ruiz. You'll be followed by Jordan Fabular, followed by Chris Duggan.
Councilmembers, my family arrived here in San Diego in 1919. Four generations, my kids now. I'm an SDSU alumni, and contrary to what the past alumni president tells you, we are not all against Soccer City. Some of us are very much for it. Today, we heard about the importance of funding the arts, funding police, and finding, helping the homeless. And today, there's a group of us here asking you to fund a special election that will cost $5 million but potentially generate billions of dollars annually that which you can turn around and use to fund those programs. Being a member of so many nonprofits here in town has really opened my eyes, and I ask you to vote that. And I also remind you that a lot of these people that you see at FS, you all personally know, they're the supporters of these nonprofits that we see in town. They help our homeless, they help our nonprofits, they help the arts. They're not here to take our money.
Thank you. Jordan Fabular, followed by Chris Duggan, followed by Tony C.
Hello, my name is Jordan Fabia. I'm a resident of Rancho Penasquitos. I've grown up in San Diego my entire life, and I've grown to fall in love with a sport of soccer. And I see how great of a soccer community we have here in San Diego. It's top-notch. And that's why I really want an MLS team here. After seeing what the Chargers did to this city, I don't want this to happen again and for certain people to not allow us to have the team we want, because we have a brilliant, the Soccer City people have a brilliant vision for this city, and if we get an MLS team here, it'll dramatically transform our city and make it world-class and finally allow us to escape from LA's shadow. So I don't want this proposal to go down in flames. Thank you very much.